Yep, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, calling the meeting to order at seven o'clock PM. Has there been a declaration of public notice?
Yes.
All right, so we'll start with the order of business. There are no public appearances today. We do have two public students, but they will be speaking at a later part of our meeting. All right, and can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Susan Manning?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Susan Fox?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Lorene, aye, ayes have it, motion is carry. Next are recognitions. Dan?
Okay, thank you, I have two recognitions tonight. First, I'd like to start by recognizing two of our teachers who were just approved for their retirements in our consent agenda. Mary Blanding is currently an advanced learner resource teacher for our district. She's been with Monona Grove for the last five years. And Pam Cole, currently a face teacher at Glacial Drummond School. Pam has been with the district for 26 years. And we certainly congratulate both Pam and Mary on their retirements at the end of the school year. Okay, Monona Grove High School is currently hosting two Ukrainian foreign exchange students. In a show of support for each of our Ukrainian exchange students and other MG students with ties to Ukraine, and to provide relief to Ukrainians as they experience profound violence, the Monona Grove Model UN coordinated a fundraiser for care, which is a charity helping with the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine. And thanks to the generosity of our community, the fundraiser has raised over $17,000 since Friday. Tonight, we are extremely honored to welcome two of our students, sophomores Kate Popova and Lois Buckingham. And they are here to continue to raise awareness and express support for the people of Ukraine. I'd like to welcome Kate and Lois with us this evening.
Thank you for having us. So on February 24th, 2022, Russia launched a full-scale, unprovoked attack on Ukraine. Ukraine is suffering from attacks to the point that the G7 has called the situation "a large-scale military aggression by the Russian Federation" "against the territorial integrity, sovereignty, and independence of Ukraine." This violence has already affected around 18 million people and will impact more as it continues. Without humanitarian support, many Ukrainians have been displaced from their homes and are facing freezing weather, COVID-19 risks, lack of access to healthcare, and are in critical need for food, clean water, shelter, and protection from violence. As Superintendent Olson stated, MG Model UN has hosted a fundraiser over the last week to raise donations. And we've been very successful. However, much more support is needed to help the people in Ukraine. And we would like to encourage as many people as possible to donate.
Also, I would like to personally express my gratitude for all the support that the US government and US citizens have given to Ukraine. It means a lot. I think it's important to remember that behind all the bureaucracy, politics, there are human lives whose fate depends on every even subtle action we take today.
So we'd like to ask all elected officials in this virtual room to share our message, to call for more donations, and for everyone to educate themselves on the current situation in Ukraine. You all have connections that we do not, and thus we ask you to share our message in the link for donations on your social medias and express your support for the people of Ukraine. Thank you for your support and having us here today.
Dan, that's wonderful. I just want to add, the other thing we're doing, at least my awareness, is in the city of Monona community, we've been putting up yellow and blue ribbons. And there's a group of kind of, actually, she's an MG grad who's actually putting them up and then a mom and a city council person who's kind of orchestrated this. And when I said to Mr. Wallace, if you want the students to have ribbons, we can do that too. Well, and Dan, are you going to add about, so while the fundraising was going on last weekend, apparently, the MG Model UN won the biggest award in history this weekend by winning Outstanding Delegation at a major international conference, Mexico City. Jeremy just added that on to some of the other things he told me, so. I mean, you guys have been stretching yourselves in wonderful directions, thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you for mentioning that, Susan. I was just saying, and some of the normal recognitions that we do, we'll be catching up on in our next meeting. But as long as you brought it up, I will mention that Lois was one who won one of the awards that you just mentioned, so. But since we have Kate and Lois on, we also think they'd be glad to stay with us for a few minutes if you have any questions for them or anything that you'd like to share, you know, as well, with regard to what they report.
Any questions from board members? Elizabeth?
Sorry, my button wasn't working. No, no questions, just, you know, gratitude and admiration, I think, for you two that are here and also, you know, your sort of other fellow students and colleagues that are rallying support around this. I've been following it on social myself. I think it's just an incredible show of not just support, but kind of what it means when we empower youth to really try to make a difference in terms of global solutions. And so I want to say thank you for doing that. And certainly, your call around continuing to share and lift up the work that you're doing, you know, from my perspective, you know, won't go unanswered, so, thank you again. Katrina, how are you doing?
Oh, I'm myself doing fine, holding together. Yeah, my parents are doing fine too, same feeling, not to stress out, keep calm, and keep going.
Yeah, well, we'll certainly send all the, you know, well wishes and support, you know, both monetarily and kind of, you know, spiritually to you and to your family and to your friends that are back in Ukraine.
Susan Fox, do you want to share anything?
No, I don't have anything to add. I think that was all very well said, but yeah, I was kind of wondering the same thing and trying to figure out how to ask it. Where in Ukraine are you from?
I'm myself from Odessa, so it's a major city that borders the sea. So, yeah, it's really big, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but currently, it's pretty calm in there, which I'm grateful for. And we all pray that it keeps being calm and quite safe compared to other regions.
Right, yeah. Certainly hope that it stays that way. It is certainly difficult, difficult to watch, frustrating to not be able to do more, but, yeah.
All right, it doesn't appear to be any other questions, but I echo the sentiments of both my fellow board members, Elizabeth and Susan. We are just so proud of you both, and our hearts are with you, Katrina, as well. Thank you again.
Thank you so much for having us. Thank you.
So next, there's no correspondence and announcements, so next is the administrative reports. And we have principal report Danielle Wright from Cottage Grove School.
Good evening, everyone. I have Donna May with me, who is my TOSA. And I should explain what that is, because my mom asked me the other day, she was like, you keep on saying TOSA, what is that? And so, TOSA is a teacher on special assignment, but I like to think that we're Batman and Robin, so. She's here with me today to present. And typically, I don't get nervous at all, but after following these two ladies, I think they kind of set the tone for tonight. So I do apologize for my emotions, because I was very, very good to hear and see. And, you know, my thoughts to everyone out in Ukraine, this is very difficult. So, we're gonna go ahead and share about Cottage Grove School. I'm gonna share my screen, if you give me one second. All right, so let's get started. Cottage Grove School, our presentation came together with everyone involved. And before we actually get into a lot of the meat potatoes, we thought to kind of start with the why. The whole presentation will be laid out into our UDL type of theme. As a practitioner and a researcher, I really believe that you have to lead by example, model, what you expect your teachers to do. And so, when we look at instruction in our building, we are focusing on UDL. So I organized my slides in that way. And so, we're gonna start with the why of our learning. And I think this is very important to note, as far as what we're doing at our school. And so, there has been a lot of barriers that, of course, we can name so many, from the pandemic to COVID, to the transition that we had with being virtual, virtual 2.0, to coming in a hybrid model, and then, of course, coming together as a whole. And I think that we just need to name that, that Cottage Grove School has had some unique situations and very different from other buildings, to which we adopted grade levels from two separate buildings and two different leadership styles. So we had first grade coming from Taylor Query, who was under our previous principal, who retired Connie. And then we had second grade, who was under Reed, and both of them are fantastic. But at the same time, both of them are very different. And so, we are coming together to make Cottage Grove School. In addition to this year, I mean, because we're coming together, that's very different. We also had new staff in general. And so, we had two new admin assistants for our building, and they had to learn the lay of the land. They did such a good job, and they're still doing a good job. I joke around with others, saying that I don't really run the building, it's these two ladies who do it for me. And so, we're really grateful to have them, but of course, that is something that we have to acknowledge, that as a learning curve. So we had two new admin assistants come in this year. We've had a first grade teacher that's new to our building, three SEAs, two lunchroom supervisors, one speech and language pathologist, one social worker, and two building subs. So with that being said, we had a very, and have a very different feel than what Cottage Grove used to be. And so, that's something that, like, we are very honest about when we own it, that even though we are coming together, merging together, we have to reinvent ourselves and rename who we are. And we're not the old Cottage Grove School, even though we're in the physical brick and mortar and things have been renovated, and it looks amazing and beautiful. We have to reinvent what it looks like for us. And so, that is kind of what drove the why to our learning. And we couldn't put a lot of systems in place, because we didn't have a foundation on relationships. Our staff didn't know each other, but all the new staff that we hired coming in, two staff from different buildings who may have never really had opportunities to talk to each other, are now under the same building. And we had to work really hard on how to get to know each other, what our communication styles looked like, and how we can work within our building to make it our own, to reinvent ourselves. Reaching our goals through equity, wellness, and community. Let's try to make it bigger. Sorry, I'm not good on Zoom. We'll just keep on going, make sure, can you hear? Okay.
Cottage Grove is a great school. It's just so cool. There's so many nice, the playgrounds are amazing. I love it so much.
Leading from the inside out means navigating through our blind spots to create a culture that values and acknowledges and centers the voices of all of our community members.
Learning from the inside out means examining my own identity and the impact that it has on the thousands of decisions that I make every day as a teacher. The more I discover about myself, the more I have to offer each and every one of my students.
Loving from the inside out means sharing your identity with others. I really loved hearing Danielle's soul story, as it really let us get to know her better as a principal and as a friend and a person. And it really leads, it really helps us have a better collaborative relationship to work together as closer as a whole entire school.
One of the things that we've been doing this year is giving students the opportunity to explore their own identity. This has been a cornerstone of our social emotional growth. One thing that students did at the beginning of the year, an example of this, was they got their own identity journal, where they could explore things that they liked and disliked, hobbies, family, friends. All of those things make up our identity, even knowing our strengths and our weaknesses. This has been super powerful for students as we've continued to learn about not only our own identity, but exploring others and their cultures as well, and learning to celebrate how we are all different.
As part of our Inside Out work, I've been working on collection development in the CGS library. A major focus with that is collecting books that allow students to see their own cultures and identities. I look for books that act as both windows and mirrors, allowing students to learn about identities that may be different from their own windows and also dive deeper into their own identities, mirrors. I appreciate the opportunity to be part of the co-planning to co-serv teams, to work together, to share these resources with our students.
Hi, my name's Lena Smith, I'm the admin assistant two here at Cottage Grove School. I am standing in front of the periodic table of Black history. This is something we put on this year for Black History Month, and as an admin staff of myself, we just wanted to bring unity to our school, to our staff, to create the celebration of changemakers in the Black community and to show significance to our staff and students. So with this, it is a resource we found online and recreated and twisted with our own spice. But each staff got two individuals, some had more, and then they did their own research and populated pictures and symbols and put it all together on this. There is a color coordination, which is cool too, so it is organized specifically on different people, activists, athletes, things like that, kind of showing that you can be a changemaker in any avenue. And the importance of this is that by examining other people and their identities and how people are complex, and it's not just one thing or another, it really shows that we can be a lot of different things. So learning about folks like this helps us reexamine who we are, how we identify, and who we want to be continuing through our lives.
When we started the school year, we came together as a new staff and we had a new principal. And one really important thing for us to do was to develop relationships with one another. And I was really excited when Mrs. Wright asked us to sign up for a one-on-one with her. She called it Donuts with Danielle. And we had an opportunity to get to know her, and she had an opportunity to get to know us, because it's super important for all of us to have a really positive climate in our building and a positive culture. So thanks, Danielle.
Bringing two schools together has been a challenge, especially with COVID protocols. The leadership team at CGS has offered opportunities to build community and come together, including the soul food dinner that Danielle brought in after our February staff meeting. She sent videos and information out to us on the meaning of soul food and shared of herself with us. It was a great opportunity for us to come together.
We're diving into becoming a newly established Cottage Grove team. Some of the work that has been impactful for me has been around our work related to communication colors. The colors help us explore ourselves and others' values and relate that to our communication. To keep with the MG theme, I'm a blue.
I'm a brown.
I'm a blue.
I'm a blue.
I'm brown.
I'm a blue.
I'm a green.
I'm a red.
I'd like to express my appreciation for Danielle Wright, our CGS principal. Danielle's arrival at CGS was like a breath of fresh air. I particularly appreciate how Danielle has prioritized getting to know our staff. Danielle is a highly effective leader, and she does it by building community as opposed to establishing authority. Danielle has shown us that it's not dangerous for teachers and administrators to be friends. With Danielle, I feel a level of comfort and trust I never felt before with an administrator. I appreciate Danielle Wright.
I just love Cottage Grove School.
So, from what you heard in the video are just a little bit of the truths from teachers that shared their experience so far. To be fully transparent, I didn't see the finished video, Donna May and some others worked on it. And so, when I saw it, I was like, man, I didn't pay you guys to do that, that's awesome. I mean, it was just very warm and it was honest and it was good feedback to hear. But also, it just shows the intentionality of the work that we're trying to do. And so, this is something that I think has been very clear from the beginning as to our goals. And so, I just wanted to explain a bit more into what that looked like. So part of our professional development for staff is in four parts. And our vision is to continue this, kind of like a strategic framework. So we're not just gonna touch on something and then drop it, but we're gonna touch on it, touch on something else, and then build upon it and keep on building until eventually, we have all four components really, really strong. And this is the foundation of our relationship building. And in order for us to get to more solid systems that we need, such as looking deeper into other parts of our building and how to build different systems, we really have to make sure that we have a strong foundation, our relationships and trust with each other. So the first part was soul story, making connections with each other through the power of storytelling. The next was communication colors, how do we communicate with each other in the workplace? The third was inside-out work, what does equity look like working from the inside out? And then the last component is mindfulness, restorative justice, community engagement. How can we work on our own mental health, mindfulness, restorative practices, and justice to build community with each other and our students? So I'll talk about the first part, soul story. So I started with our staff on the power of a soul story. And what I learned from that process wasn't just to share who I am, but often, when you get a new leader, you look at things such as, like, their resume, right? Where'd you go to school? What jobs do you have? What makes you qualified? And those are things that define a leader. More or less, we tend to look at things in a very professional lens, and it takes away the humanity in the work. And so, what I decided to do was to lead by example. In order for my staff to trust my leadership, I must be vulnerable with them and show them who I am as a human. And so, we did some work on the power of a soul story. And I led all staff during our staff meeting on my soul story. And I just wanted to share a couple pictures of my family to you all. And this is not the presentation I shared of my soul story, it was very deep. And it went down the path of who I am, what made me who I am today, who's my family, how did I get here? What is my why? And, you know, like, what do I envision for myself in the future on a personal level? And so, what I learned from the power of soul story was that telling stories in itself has such a big impact, right? As we know from history, that often, history is passed through storytelling. Storytelling of knowledge, of experiences, that's how you make connection to what has happened in the past. Also, it helps make interconnectiveness. So how can I see myself within the story? And so, what I learned is that by sharing my soul story, I had a deeper connection to my own why, actually grounded myself. But then, it also allowed for my staff to find multiple connections with their own personal journeys. And before we knew it, we're more similar than different. And even though I'm, you know, the new principal, there was a lot of parts of my personal soul story that I learned afterwards that had a lot of connections with other teachers. And in a matter about our age or our race, ethnicity, or our gender, we truly shared a lot of the same experiences. And to be honest, I think that's what grounded us right away. It was the ability for me to be extremely vulnerable, and it was really hard to do so, but to connect to everyone saying, this is who I am, all of me, whether it's good or bad, this is what I bring to the table. And so, I think that having soul stories are very important. And then next year, I'm gonna encourage staff to be vulnerable as well and share their soul stories with each other. And so, I'll quickly share with you who's on the slide. I have my husband Alonso, who is probably the best thing that's ever happened to me. And we share three children together. We have Demi, who's next to him. Demi is not his biological child, however, Demi is my oldest, my first born, and Alonso adopted her. And so, that, this picture of them together is a paperwork of her officially being adopted, and that was a big moment in our lives. And then, the picture next to them is Demi and Dallas. And that's when they found out that I was expecting, which I was not expecting that, but it's all a blessing. And then Dallas graduating from 4K was another big moment in our lives. And then there's little Miss Denver, who is a ray of sunshine, and she just keeps the world moving in a positive light. So I can share a little bit of who I am with you all as well. So communication colors, I know you heard some of my teachers share, I'm a blue, I'm a brown, or I'm a green, or I'm a red. Communication colors, we did this activity in order to help each other understand our communication styles. Again, coming together from different buildings and then also hiring new staff completely. We had to learn what words mean and the power of words and how things are being said. Because my staff do not know me, I may write an email, and it could be read 10 different ways. And so, how do you address that in a way where we can actually have open and honest conversations without misreading things? And so, that's gonna take a long time, it's not gonna happen overnight, it's gonna take a lot of intentional work. And so, each color has a representation. And I linked in some charts so you can see what the colors mean. And just real quick, I want to go through blue, and then we can get back to the presentation. But a lot of my teachers are the color blue. And that means that they identify as being blue, so they are friendly, sensitive, team-oriented, supportive, relationship builders, honest feelings about being important, helpful, considerate, emotional, dependable, agreeable, loving, being accepted, relater. And they typically are non-confrontational. And I laugh with that a little bit, because when you think about elementary school teachers, that actually is very accurate, for the most part, as far as like the people who would want to work with little tiny children all day. They tend to be very supportive, very helpful, very honest, wants to get along, wants to- very honest, wants to get along, wants to create a culture that is very fun and engaging. And so it wasn't too surprising that I had some teachers who are blue. So with this card, though, it says, people who are blue, they tend to exhibit these characteristics. Doesn't mean that that is 100% the truth, right? You could have one color that is like your dominant or your primary, and then a second color that, you know, may also come through. We also talked about how your communication colors may change when you are not in the workplace. So you may be a blue at work, but then maybe a green at home. And so we dug deeper into what that meant in your own personal life. So like how you deal with your spouse, or your children, or your parents, and how you may communicate with them, or how you grew up and what that communication looked like. In addition to the cards, in the end, it says, you know, the communication style, what to do and what not to do. And so it says, you know, if you are a blue, if I'm a different color and I'm working with the blue, I should make a personal connection and focus on relationships. Talk in terms of how you request help people or improve relationships. Show that you have feelings. Ask them to share their ideas and feelings. Sincerely praise their efforts and input. Make it safe for them to express their views, et cetera, right? Do not act too busy to listen to their needs. Launch right into business or work-related discussion. Talk only in terms of facts. Use false flattery or any form of manipulation. Use put downs about being too touchy feely, a personal attack, argue, use commands, et cetera. And so this was really important because a lot of my staff are blues and I'm a brown. And being a brown, I'm very much so the opposite of blue. I am very beautiful, linear, direct. And so with that being said, though, it helped us understand each other. So if I say something directly to you, it's not anything other than me just communicating. And so we had a breakthrough. I mean, it was amazing. You can hear staff saying to others in the hallway, like, what color are you? What color are you? Or even some staff are saying, hey, it's okay. Remember, we're blues, right? And so it started to kind of like go into the culture of the building to where we're referring to our colors and how we communicate and being very mindful of it. Like, oh, well, Danielle's a brown, not a blue. So to talk to her, usually you have a list of what you need, problem, solution. That's how she thinks. Like, don't expect her to give you a warm embrace. And so it was just very good to go through all those steps with them. And again, this is longer process than what I'm explaining. But I did want to share with you a little bit of why in the video, others were sharing that their colors. And it was a really exciting activity to do. So the majority of teachers at Cottage Grove are blue. And to also meet the needs of our teachers, what I've done for our communications and our agendas is I'm really, really aware of that. So I have an inclusion activity. So I don't just jump into business. I immediately stop what I'm doing to make sure that I check in, see how others are doing, how they're feeling, if they have anything exciting going on. It's very intentional to make sure that I'm meeting the needs of my teachers. We also get to know each other and genuinely learn about each other's private lives. And so I've been taking the time to connect with my teachers outside of the classroom to the best of our ability. I'm trying to seek for understanding, lean with empathy, and understanding that open conflict will be a challenge for some of my teachers. So instead of me as a brown who's totally okay with open conflict, I have to understand that some of my teachers just aren't. And so I have to provide a safe space for them so that they can share and that we can continue to work on the things that need to be expressed and shared. So the next part of our presentation is the how of learning. We talked about our why. Now it's how. How are we getting to our goals? What does this look like?
Hello. So one of the things that Danielle has brought to us is the inside out work from the National Equity Project. And this has been the foundation for our growth and development work and is grounded in unpacking our own biases, examining our identities, and exploring our blind spots to better serve our students. And the three pursuits are leading, learning, and loving from the inside out, which is captured in this image, which we have as our Cottage Grove School t-shirts. And we believe that the work we need to do begins on the inside, inside of ourselves, inside of our own organizations, and in our own communities. Okay, so leading from the inside out, this means examining systems and structures and creating a collaborative school culture that allows us to feel connected and safe and effective. Examples of this are in the structures of our meetings. So in our coordinating meetings, in our staff meetings, in our co-planning C3 meetings, and in our grade level meetings, we've worked to establish our statements of beliefs, which are linked here, and our norms of collaboration, our roles and responsibilities of all of our team members. One of the things that I've enjoyed is that in our co-planning meetings, each team has set a goal. And we've implemented a process checker, which is a person who monitors the team and gives them feedback about how they're meeting their goals. So for one of our teams, they are working on, you know, hearing all voices and monitoring, like, are we hearing all the voices of the people who are in our co-planning meetings? While another team is examining how much time they're talking about specific kids, because that's our goal, is to get to that student level in our co-planning teams, and giving feedback about, you know, giving data and feedback about that. We've also implemented intentional professional development that's allowed us to increase communication and done our upcoming, we're doing some work on restorative justice and mindfulness. In March, we are having a mindfulness coach come and work with us, and we're all looking forward to that.
So what does learning from the inside out look like? Because that seems like a very challenging thing. I'm going to play a video real quick from our school psychologist. Her name is Kelsey DeGoff. And then I'm going to go a little bit deeper into what these characteristics look like and what they mean.
As part of our new learning around our inside out work, the leadership team at Cottage Grove School has been examining the 15 principles of white supremacy. We've also set goals for ourselves around at least one of the principles. And we have revisited our growth related to those principles by sharing stories and celebrations. This has really helped us to strengthen our ethical practices at Cottage Grove School. I initially decided to focus on the white supremacy principle of there's only one right way. I've been actively seeking out teammates to gain their viewpoints and understand new pathways that I can meet the learning of our students and not only sticking to the one way that I've done in the past.
So with our coordinators, we rolled out this article, Happened When My School Started Dismantle White Supremacy Culture: 15 Characteristics. And within our leadership team, we went ahead and identified which characteristic we wanted to focus in on. And within the article, it was pretty clear about three reasons why we needed to dismantle white supremacy culture in schools. The first statement was to dehumanize people of color. The second, it shuts down learning. So specifically for the learning window of how we can create and cultivate really good learning and how to cut down stereotype threat that is very problematic for students of color. White supremacy culture, if it is continued, will continue to shut down learning. And that's something that we really have to be cognizant of. And then three, dismantling white supremacy culture, uniting staff to work towards being anti-racist. So again, there's 15 characteristics and one component that we reviewed in the article. And then there's 13 that we thought were pretty solid that we didn't focus in on. And the characteristics are professional perfectionism, sense of urgency, defensiveness, quantity over quality, worship of the written word, paternalism, either or thinking, power hoarding, fear of open conflict, individualism, progress is bigger, more, objectivity, and right to comfort, sorry. After we went through that with the coordinators, we went ahead and looked at Healing Our Nation, which is from the National Equity Project. We went through the article in great detail. And then we also presented it out to our staff in a staff meeting. And this article in particular ties in with white supremacy culture. But it also gives a different lens on how we need to heal. And healing itself isn't just something that miraculously is done. I think often we feel like, oh, I need healing, so I need to do this, 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 and then I can achieve healing. And that's not truly what healing is. It's a sense of brokenness that becomes healing and then brokenness again, like a cycle. And so the article talks about how individual healing is really prevalent in today and how we have interpersonal healing and then institutional healing. And how all those things are tied together, which lends to structural healing. And so one part of the article that our teams definitely like honed in on is this notion of being a rebel leader. And that is a person who speaks truth, who takes charge, who may say things that are unconventional or that might not be socially normed. And so we really leaned into how can we be rebel leaders? And it was just really insightful to hear the reflections, to hear people's feedback, and to really take a hold of the characteristics and not just go through an activity, but to always revisit it. And so I think that that is the start of learning from the inside out. And it's truly looking at oneself and how we can dismantle white supremacy culture.
As part of our new...
Okay, loving from the inside out meant bringing back the fun into work. So we worked as a leadership team to bring things to the staff that would bring us together. For example, we had a gingerbread building competition after school one evening and had our students vote on the best one. I didn't win. Danielle surprised us with a coffee barista one morning. And that was in our rotunda. And believe me, that was quite the head. Teachers were coming back for seconds, thirds. It was a very nice way to just greet each other in the morning and have a chance to take a breath and just chat with each other. We had our soul food dinner, which you heard about in our video. We've had our wellness days and PD that starts a little bit later to give us a little bit of time to connect and to breathe and to reflect. And then Danielle and I have tried to really work hard to cover some duties for some teachers. Just give them a break sometimes, cover lunch, recess, go in for additional planning, give teachers an opportunity to go visit other teachers' classrooms, and just whatever the teachers need.
So it comes to my ultimate goal. And I really believe this. One of my mentors told me a long time ago, and it really stuck, is that Danielle, if you don't feed the teachers, they'll eat the kids. And I never really knew what they meant by that. Like, I was so confused about, like, what do you mean if I don't feed the teachers, they'll eat the kids? But now that I've gotten to spaces of leadership, I definitely understand what that means. And essentially, literally, it doesn't mean that teachers will eat the kids, but that, you know, we have the ability to empower teachers and to make them feel heard and to support them. And if teachers get their needs met, then what's going to happen? It's going to create an environment that is so good and so rich and so inviting and is going to deeply impact kids. If teachers are miserable and unhappy, then what does that do to the classroom and to our students? And our ultimate goal, and I do believe this, the reason why we're in education is to foster learning and to grow students, not to cause harm. And so I added this quote in there. And there is actually a book about it as well, if you don't feed the teachers, they'll eat the kids. So what I did, and what I'm continuing to do, is to have check-ins with teachers. Sometimes it was sporadic and I would pull teachers to the side and just, you know, do check-ins. And in February, Dawn and I had this idea that we were going to do these rounds, where Dawn created this really cool activity. And she was going to go into every classroom and do the activity while I had 20-minute one-to-one sessions with teachers, and they can talk about anything and everything they wanted. It could be about, why is the sky blue, to what is up with this policy? That was their time with me and selfishly taken, whatever you wanted to talk about. Maybe you don't want to talk to me. Take a donut, take some coffee, go on your way. It's totally okay. And so I think on paper, we thought it was going to be great. But in reflection, it was a lot on Dawn to pop into all the classes and do the same mini lessons. So we're going to have to revisit how we can do another session. But I will say the feedback from those donuts with Danielle was fantastic. Teachers felt like, for the first time in a long time, they're able to voice their concerns in a way that they felt supported. Or they're able to just have some alone time with an administrator that would never, ever have, unless they're being evaluated or any other situation. And so it was really positive. I will say, a reflection for me, is that I probably shouldn't do donuts again or I'm going to be big as a house, because with every teacher, I end up eating a donut with them. And so after the eighth teacher, I was like, oh, man, how many donuts did I eat? And so I think we probably should do like salads with Danielle, which doesn't sound as catchy. But let me tell you, that was a learning curve for myself. And I do think that we're going to do another one in May, and hopefully our goal is to have one every trimester. So what happens, though, when you feed the teachers? I mean, that was just one example of what you can do to empower teachers. But what happens is when you feed the teachers, you will see that teachers start to shift, right? And so they become leaders for equity, passionate about student learning. They can be anti-bias and anti-racist educators. They can be proactive communicators and relationship builders, reflective learners, resilient, resourceful, collaborative. And honestly, the end goal is to love their jobs and see value within themselves and others. I think it breaks my heart when I hear from teachers and they're so hypercritical about their instruction when truly they are doing a fantastic job. I mean, we have some of those hardworking educators who are so creative, who want what's best for children, and they are so hard on themselves. And I think part of it is because they are feeling very connected. And so when you are feeling like you're criticized often or not supported, then you start to internalize it as a new issue. And so I'm really hoping that when we continue to feed the teachers, to power them, to give them voice, to have opportunities to speak with me on their truths, that in return, they can start to see themselves as how I see them, as really awesome. So then the next part of our presentation is the what of learning. So we went through the why and how, and now we're talking about the what.
Okay, so we just wanted to give you a snapshot, I'm sorry, snapshot or a picture of what a day looks like for a student at Cottage Grove School, first or second grader. Their days are made up of a morning meeting, which usually includes a social, emotional learning lesson or a social justice lesson, whole group and small group reading, whole group math and math cooperative learning groups. They have specials. They have two gym classes a week, one music, one art, and one library a week. And they have science and social studies where they study current events. And writing is a big deal in first and second grade. They write classroom books. They write personal narratives, informational writing, persuasive writing, journal writing. They have a communication notebook that goes back and forth, writing from what they're doing at school and communicating that home to their parents, and their parents write back in it. And of course, in all of this, universal design for learning drives our instruction.
What we do above beyond, which we're really excited about, is our maker space. Thanks to everyone who donated and helped and supported our PTO, who is fantastic and Dawn and the committee, we created a committee internally. And let me tell you, I wish we had before pictures. We do have some later about the slides, about what looks like now. But truly, it's like magic when you walk in that space. And so I couldn't even be anywhere proud of the staff coming together to do this work. But what's above beyond, I truly think is our maker space. That's the biggest hit in our building right now. What we want to do with the maker space, once we launch it next week, will be to have a space for our first and second grade teams to bond. So we worked on staff, relationship building between grade levels. And now we're going to focus on students. And so we're going to have a buddy system for first grade and second grade teachers to bring their buddies, their classroom buddies to the maker space so that they can get to know each other as well and explore the maker space. Morning announcements are something that I think we do very well. Typically, morning announcements are, you know, let's face it, the principal talks on the microphone and, you know, some kids may say the pledge and it's, it's very much so this system that seems disconnected. And, and maybe you're eating snack in the morning and you missed something or did we hear that? Or, and so what we learned from COVID is that we can do things differently. We don't have to do the same things over and over again. We can learn from all the amazing things that we did in a terrible situation such as a pandemic and we can lift that. And so what we did this year, which is so fantastic, we are making virtual announcements and we're having students take the lead. And so just real quick, I want to show you one announcement that I'm very proud of. This is Ms. Melody's class and I did get permission to share. And so we're okay to watch this video.
Please stand for the flag of allegiance if you're a student. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's lunch is nacho cheese, beans, corn, pears and a granola bar.
There are no birthdays today.
I am me.
I am me.
I am unique.
I am unique.
I have my own strengths.
I have my own strengths.
I have my own interests.
I have my own interests.
I have my own identity.
I have my own identity.
I am me.
I am me.
As you can see, that is just something so special. And we have, our library me specialist works with our Tosa and myself to figure out a schedule and everyone is able to do morning announcements. So it's not just a select few, but we give the opportunity to all. And so that is something that I think has definitely helped the culture and climate of the building. Students get to see themselves in announcements and they're so excited about it every day. And the last part is cooperative learning groups. We have really leaned into this component of our UDL work as far as taking learning into our own hands. And so we have groups where students are actually learning how to have different roles and what their roles look like and take initiatives into the learning. It's really exciting to see.
All right, so we're really excited for our maker space initiative where we want to work with students to work to view themselves as a maker. And so what is a maker space? A maker space is a destination where students can create, problem solve, develop skills, talents, thinking and mental rigor. And here you can see our newly renewed, opened up maker space. And we have so many wonderful aspects of, aspects of it. There are places for kids to build, to create, to design. They use the design process. They go through that where they have a lesson on a problem they need to solve and they have to create their own plan. They have to improve it. They have to share it with others. There's areas for exploration. We had so many donations from parents of found materials. We have more toilet paper rolls than I don't even know what to do with, but we're going to do something with them. So we're super excited to launch this next week. So students come in and be creators and makers. Being in the maker space means that the lessons are project-based. And I just wanted to share one of the projects that teachers did within their classrooms as we were preparing our maker space. And this was called Balloons Over Broadway, where they studied about the inventor of the puppets of the balloons for the Macy's Day Parade. And students invented their own puppets and balloons and had to figure out how to fly them through the parade. And they celebrated with a school parade. One of the things that we're tying the maker space to is to these four pursuits of identity, skill development, intellectualism and criticality. So makers develop identity of scholars, creators and problem solvers. They develop skills in science, technology, robotic, robotics, art, engineering and math. They have autonomy to lead their own learning and they think about their own thinking and relate it to the world around them. Also, one of the areas we've been focusing on are cooperative learning groups. And I'm really proud of the work that teachers have done during co-planning sessions to think about our curriculum and our goals and our standards and how we can use a project or a cooperative learning, learning group to meet those goals. And so one thing we realized right away is that we really needed to build the kids' identity as a team member. And so these are just some snatch, snapshots from some slides that teachers use to teach them, you know, how, what does it look like to be a team member? What does it look like when you're solving a problem together? What does it look like when you're taking turns in sharing? And so again, the kids developed identity as collaborators, collaborators and problem solvers. They develop and apply skills and knowledge. They have autonomy to lead. The teachers are the facilitators, their own learning. And they think about their own thinking and relate it to their team members.
So what does that look like as far as outcomes? This, when I came, it's not a secret. I had Denver and I didn't start the school year. And John did a fantastic job of leading Cottage Grove. And when I came in, we were focused on two pathways, which is reading and math. After about a month of being in and touching base with staff, I started to notice that we just didn't know each other. And we had to change our pathways to focus more on SCL for staff and relationships. However, we still had a micro focus on math. And so we wanted to present some data with you all just for a moment. And so this is the fall window, which is the bottom line right here. And then the most recent is actually up to date as far as Monday. And so, which is yesterday. And so as you can see from the fall window, we have these indicators on the bottom for mid or above grade level. And so we have 18% that are in the green, either mid or above grade level. And then the yellow is about 70%, then 12% to grade levels below. Now, my most recent data has shown that our growth for students is pretty significant, right? And so we see that our most recent growth, about 30% from 8% to 30% of our students are mid or above grade level. And then 90% are still early on grade level, which is great. And then we completely reduced the number of students who were on grade level or below to 47%. And then also from 12% for two grade levels or below to 4%. So what does this look like? Again, I know I stated if you feed the teachers, they won't eat the kids, right? I think all the things that we're doing together has shown that being very intentional with our planning does yield better outcomes for students. And so what we want to continue is our pursuit through equity. And so it starts with our identity, our skill development, our intellectualism and criticality. Then also what we're thinking about starting is learning partnerships. And that is another level of deeper work. And so what we're doing right now is building a foundation within our building and relationships. But the next step for next year is to build that with students. And so learning partnerships comes from Zaretta Hammond's work. And it's very clear about how we could build capacity with students. And you take a focused student or a couple of focused students and you really lean into their learning, you talk to them, you build relationships with them. This is a mentorship. This isn't you putting all your knowledge as educator upon this child, but it's sitting at the table with the child, asking deep and meaningful questions to get to know them. And so teachers will ask students, are you willing to be a part of a partnership with me? Explain what that means. And there's a whole protocol for that that we have. And then they will also let their parents and families know that they're entering this partnership. And once we enter to the partnership, there's a series of questions and guidelines to help guide teachers through that process. And eventually it will start to happen organically where you're talking about the student in our co-planning meetings, our C3 meetings. And so you have to think about a certain child when you're planning the lesson for them in order for it to be meaningful. But the cool thing about learning partnerships is you get feedback from the student. So after the lesson, you go back to them, you say, hey, how did that lesson go? Did you see yourself in that lesson? Was that meaningful for you? Was it engaging? Was it exciting? And at that point, you get to learn how that impacted them. Well, the next level of learning partnerships isn't just about was that engaging, was it meaningful? But can you also understand our why? This is what the standard, this is what you're learning? Let's start to work towards that. And eventually, even though we have first and second graders, I strongly believe that they can start to create goals and they can map up their own learning to how to get there. And so eventually, learning partnership will yield to that, that end goal of having students take ownership or be deeply involved in their own learning to understand why they're learning something and why they're trying to reach the standard. So we are done. This is just some pictures of me playing basketball. And mind you, he really thought he was going to win, but I couldn't let that happen. And so again.
I can tell it looked real serious, Danielle, like real intense.
It got, it got there. I won't put it in my. So he wasn't serious at the end. But we're done. So that's all.
I'm going to just jump in. That's a phenomenal presentation. I'm just so impressed of, of the changes that you have made in such a short period of time. It's phenomenal. My question to you is in regards to the staff. This is kind of a paradigm shift, right, from how they were working previously. So what obstacles did you see when you were making these changes? And my second question is, how did you overcome those obstacles?
Yes, thank you. That's a very good question. And if I could be very transparent, it was a lot of obstacles. I think with any change, I mean, as humans, we, we don't like change. And so I think on paper, it seems great to make this change. And I think once people got into the change, it was hard. And I will also acknowledge the fact that me not being there at the beginning of the year, even though I transitioned with our teachers and staff and we had constant communication, we had transition meetings. I mean, we're being very thoughtful and purposeful in our planning. Not starting the year was a very big obstacle because I couldn't continue that conversations. And for those who don't know, when I gave birth, it, it was not at the time of my due date, right? And so it was a very abrupt time, so it was not enough time to transition a lot of the work that led up to that. And granted, John and I did have conversations and meetings prior to, but I had Denver eight weeks early. And so we did not anticipate the transition to be so quickly. So I think it was just the, the, the quick turnaround of, of me not being there to continue to filter questions or to work out systems. I think that had a lot to do with a lot of the, 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 the communication. And so I think one of the obstacles was definitely that. And again, it, it's not something that could have been prevented, but that, that is an obstacle. And I think also the second obstacle is just learning different communication styles and leadership styles, which I forgot to add in the beginning, we have a new Tosa, right? So it, it's just new all around. So with administration being new completely, with filtering out what our needs are and then coming from two different buildings, one building in particular that was very operational and systems-driven, to come in and then not really know what system's going on because they're used to that was a challenge. And so what I did to combat that or how, how I addressed it was just acknowledge, we are no longer Taylor Prairie first grade team. We are no longer Cottage Grove School second grade team. We are Cottage Grove collectively. And Dawn and I often would say, nope, stop, nope, stop. We're not going to talk about the past. Nope. Like we had to just start to shut it down. Like I understand what you used to do. I understand what you used to do. This is not what we're doing right now. Like we, we had to be very mindful, but then also share the why to why we're saying those things. And so eventually staff was like, no, you're right. I'm, I'm doing it again. Like I need to just be present in the moment. And we often just shared it with them, like what opportunity do you have to come into a school to co-create what the conditions are? Like that is very rare. Like you have the opportunity to evaluate what you truly need and then to co-create the systems that we implement. And so I think after this reframing our why and constantly just communicating and reaffirming everyone who did start to have like, there's moments, people are like, oh my gosh, what are we doing? And just to bring it back to the why, this is the reason why we're here. We're, we're not going to implement systems that yield no outcome. Just because we did in the past does not mean that it's effective. And so we need to be very thoughtful with why we're doing the things we're doing.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for this. This is really great. I love the concept of like learning from the inside out. And I love the emphasis, like the parallel emphasis on staff and students and this idea that in order for me to be the most effective educator, I need to really fully understand myself and be like willing to recognize what that is and put myself out there. And I think you're on the road to creating a really empowering environment, not just for your staff, but your students as well, which I think is, you know, critical, right? As you co-share and co-construct the learning. So I loved it. And I want to say, thank you so much also for bringing your data. Because I think it's really easy for us to think about like all of these big concepts and those kinds of things, which are really important. I'm glad we have them. And also like, again, rooting ourselves and, you know, is anybody better off because of these things? And how do we know that? And that's kind of one area that, you know, we can, we can track. It's not the only way to track, but it is one area to track. So I just wanted to give you special accolades for, for bringing your data. I appreciate, appreciate that. Two questions for you. One is around family engagement. And I know it's been a little bit different because of COVID. Um, and I know it's been a little bit different because of COVID, so like, what does family engagement look like as you're building? What really is a community um, an inclusive community, right, which obviously would include parents and caregivers? And then I have a second question I'll ask you for that.
Do you want to give me the second question, like can you answer it for you?
Yeah, I'm curious about the use of the school forest, I feel like that's a really like unique thing that you have on your property and I'm just curious to know. Um, as the weather warms here, if there's any intention of of utilizing that space in an interesting and creative way.
All right, I'll answer that one first and I'll go to.
Cause it's a fun question, I'm like, are we gonna do some forest school, Danielle?
Um, we've we've actually been using it this whole time. Um, so Cottage Grove School itself um has used it, and it's so funny you asked that, Elizabeth, because. I asked Dan, like, is that our forest, is it like village, like whose forest is it, like? Like, can I use, can I not, like, is.
Nature belongs to everyone, Danielle.
I didn't know, and so he was like, oh, you know, it's our forest, I'm like, oh, okay, that's interesting. Um, so anyway, teachers tap into that, which is exciting, I've seen lessons where. They have brought their class actually in the forest and they've done a science lesson and it's fantastic. Um, and so we use it, we use it in the fall and I know that they have plans to use it in the spring. Uh, but it's not just locked in the Cottage Grove School. Um, actually, starting, I wanna say next week, I might misspoke, either this week or next week. Um, we have students from MG, um, MG.
Twenty-one.
Thank you, twenty-one, it lost me that quick, um, who have also used our forest. Um, and they started in the fall and they go for consecutive days. And um, they're coming back again for three days to use it. And so um, I don't think it's sitting idle, um, I I did tell Dan we need to landscape it maybe or or clean it up or. Um, but yeah, that's it's definitely being utilized and we want to continue to promote it and to use it as well. Because it is such an amazing resource that um I think we can't forget about. And so others also are welcome to use that space. Um, and as far as family engagement, I have a whole plan for that. Um, so I think, you know, before, cause it's it's so, it's so, um, it's a challenge not to just do everything you want. Um, but it's really um intentional, like I said in the beginning, a strategic plan, right, to start off with this and then this and then build upon. Um, and so our um, our third year plan, and I know it seems like, why three years, Danielle? Well, unfortunately, because of pandemic, because we are trying to get back to um some type of systems. Now that we establish ourselves as who we are, um, now we gotta get some stronger instructional systems going. But by year three, what we envision is to have a fantastic family engagement system. Um, right now, we have our library media specialist who is, her background is is equity. I mean, she is fantastic. And so I already spoke with her um about rolling out a virtual session. For inviting parents to come in to get books and we actually buy books for them and encourage reading um at home. Or virtual reading, reading together, snacks, food, we're talking about having um other clubs come in for babysitting for students. I mean, all these things to make sure that there's no barriers, if you have small children um that are younger than first and second grade. Um, how can you access this, right, if you feel like you can't get out the house? Well, dinner is gonna be provided, snacks, babysitting, right? I think as a parent, I have a different lens, because those are the barriers that I would have. And so we're trying our best, thinking about the growth of Cottage Grove, the direction's going. Um, how we can have systems that are gonna be sustainable. Um, but then also, what can we do to pull families in, especially with literacy? Cause we know that literacy is such a strong thing that we need to make sure that students are grasping, especially in grades one and two. Um, I mean, I can go into data, Elizabeth, I'm not gonna do that right now, but. Um, at different time, we can talk about what the data says and why that, why literacy is very important. Um, and so that's one aspect of family engagement as far as um what it looks like to invite parents in. Now, as far as what we're doing at the end of this year, I wanna consider it family engagement, but I've been working. Oh, man, I'm gonna take up this whole meeting, Dan, I'm so sorry. Um, I'll try to be super quick. So I've been working with um our district's SRO Jets. And we have been didactically planning an event, end of the year event for our students. And this event is gonna be just a community type of field, we're going, cause again. Let me back up a little bit, I was part of the SRO committee and I've been contacting my own internal dad on how I use SRO at elementary school. Um, so I've been working with her, we have monthly meetings, we talk about, you know, like what her role can look like and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we're gonna have this event, we already reached out to venues to donate items for kids, food, et cetera. And this is gonna be something that we think is gonna be an exciting thing for kids to do. They're gonna learn about um different aspects of being a public service member, so fire department's gonna be there. Um, and I I shouldn't say officially, because we have some meetings with some chiefs to um officially officially have this meeting. But those are some things that conversations are having, like this is what we're talking about and planning and designing to do. Um, and we're gonna have a time slot so families can come in it as well to also partake. And to see their child do fun events and games and et cetera. Um, so like, those are just small little things that we are gonna do throughout the year. But the big thing that we are focused on for year three is to bring families into our building. To be a part of learning, to teach them literacy, to teach them phonics, um phonemic awareness, all of those things. Like, we're gonna transfer that learning so that it's not gonna be such a a big like, well, what is this that my child gotta understand? It's gonna be more or less like, this is how the school is providing reading instruction. And and I can explain later why for reading and not math, but um we're gonna focus on reading for year three. And it's gonna be deeply involved in um the basics of literacy. Sorry for rambling, but there's a lot.
No, it was, that was great, thank you, and I I'll connect with you offline and we can have a deeper conversation about those things, so thanks, Danielle.
Thanks, Elizabeth, Susan Manning.
Oh, Danielle, this was, I I know I'm saying what everybody else is saying, but I wanna say it it um. Again, this was amazing collaborative leadership um that was shown to us tonight. And um, again, utilizing these incredible inclusive processes. And I think. It would be wonderful for you to be able to see where we've been and where you've brought us. Um, in this school specifically, um. It it's amazing. Um, there's a point where. Our staff didn't speak to each other and our staff didn't speak to our administrators and everybody felt hurt. Um, it again, Reed started a great. Great work and you have just moved into this in a wonderful way. The other historical piece that you've integrated wonderfully, and I think you're looking at it right now, is the school forest. And um, I'll get in touch with you as everybody else is saying. Um, there are still people in that community who have cleaned that forest top to bottom. And use the students as a major part of um, a place where you. The students and the community come together and and do major work, but I'll get in touch with you about that. But um, the difference you've made with your staff and the people that you're working with. And the students is absolutely incredible. And you should write this story.
Oh, thank you. It it was the bind for them, they had to to trust the work, you know, it wasn't just me and. I'm happy that I have staff that want to do the work. I mean, I think if they didn't wanna do the work, I think it would be a bigger challenge. So it truly is, we have amazing teachers who just wanna be in the space, they wanna do what's best for kids. They wanna dismantle these systems, they they wanna rethink how we're doing education. And we're taking our learning from the pandemic and we're transferring it. And so, you know, to be honest with you, Susan, I feel very honored to be in the space, to be with them, to lead alongside them. Um, because it's it's collective and it feels that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan Manning, uh Susan Fox, do you have?
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't have a whole lot to add to that, it was a wonderful presentation of just. How you've really have such a clear concept of how you needed to fit all these pieces together, what the pieces were and. How to proceed in such a collaborative way, and I love that you have a strategic plan that goes out, you know, a few years that you're not. Because I think that's the mistake we make all too often, is we try to change everything at once and get everything going at one time. And you can't do that because it just never works. And so you're really doing this in-depth. Develop staff development that is so crucial towards making the changes in that building, I it's just great, so thank you very much.
Alright, doesn't appear to be any additional uh questions, so thank you again uh to Danielle. And the entire staff of Cottage Grove. Um, phenomenal presentation and you're doing really great work, we're very proud of what you're doing.
Thank you, everyone.
Alright, uh, next is the superintendent report, Dan?
Okay, thank you, um, two just really uh quick items. Um, so the S R three funds and and we'll talk more about this as we get into the budget development in these upcoming months. But I just wanted to share with the board that uh one of the requirements that we have with the S R three funds is that we need to seek. Uh, community or stakeholder feedback uh with possible ways of using utilizing the funds. So I share with you tonight is the first draft of some slides that we would share of as part of that communication. And then we would have an open-ended survey to provide uh to get that feedback. So as you'll see, when you look at that, it's a template that DPI did provide for school districts. And that we, you know, customized, you know, to our data and uh, uh, but I just wanted to keep that that in front of you. So you knew that, you know, that that we're likely to get that out this week, um, and so I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's coming. But I said, we'll get into the details and more later on with a budget reported in upcoming months.
Thank you.
Yes, any questions on the S R communication? Okay, and then the second piece, uh, operating plan, um, I don't think there's any surprise, I just wanted to, uh, we, since the last meeting we have. We said the last piece was actually to make the changes in the written plan that we've been talking about. And so again, kudos to uh Krista and the health services team. Um, and Katie and 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 a lot of people put a lot of work into getting this up to date with, here's the latest with all the specifics about. Uh, you know, quarantining rules and this and that and and so, uh, so the operating plan is up to date on our website. But um, so if there's any questions on operating plan, we can answer those tonight as well.
There are no questions, Dan? Alright, uh, moving on to board reports, uh, first is ad hoc sustainability committee, Peter?
Sorry, didn't mean to find the mute button, uh, this committee met Thursday. We talked about our recutting event in May and in interest of brevity, we just, you know, chatted about details, so there's nothing really to report, so. Interest of brevity, since we're already at eight thirty, uh, we can continue, thanks.
Thank you, Peter. Alright, next are possible action items. Uh, first is the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three preliminary certified staffing plan.
Okay, so we uh discussed this at our last meeting and just um since that time, the. Uh, the at the high school, they've had an opportunity to go through the course requests of students. And so the only update uh from the plan that we had from two weeks ago is that we are looking to add an additional half. Time F I A teacher at the high school uh to deal with the uh student enrollment. Um, we haven't updated some of the, you know, elementary related arts, there are those part-time FTEs that are contingent upon a number of sections. That could still fluctuate a little bit as well as middle of high school, but as far as the core areas, uh, this is what we believe to be a complete plan at this point. Um, and so um, again, you eventually, as we hire teachers, of course, you approve all those individual contracts. But we just wanna make sure that particularly these new positions that are before you and we are looking, you know, for your approval tonight of this preliminary plan.
Peter, did you have a question?
Oh, I'm just trying to reconcile the various numbers, we see an enrollment increase of twenty-five in the high school. Is that correct? Which is where most of our additional staff is. I mean, we've actually seen some pretty significant enrollment increases um, uh, over the prior year. And that's driving the staffing plan, obviously.
Yeah, so for the K eight, obviously, it's it's pretty clear cut, right, number of homeroom sections and we, you know, rely on our board seat class size. And in the high school, of course, it plays out a little bit different because there's so much choice with the courses that students take. So um, so with that, um, you know, one of the things, just as a reminder, we did not approve any open enrollment seats. At the high school because of the projected growth. And um, and so that's why there's not a a real big significant uh change in in staffing at the high school at this time. Uh, cause you you take twenty-five students, disperse it amongst four grades, of course, that's a pretty minimal impact. Um, but what can vary, of course, is electives, as to to choose one course, you know, from the other. The other thing that I guess I'll just point out that um, as, you know, right now we have the the request, the master scheduling hasn't been done. And so, of course, there's always conflicts and students don't always get their first choices. But one of the other things that we're finding as we grow, and this will be a later discussion, uh, back to facilities again too, that in some cases. It's not always just a matter of staffing, but it is uh the space that we have facilities. For example, our culinary arts program is part of the the phase program, we have, it's become very popular. We have a lot of students have requested taking those courses, we have one uh lab, one kitchen lab. And so, doesn't matter how many staff we hire, you don't have space to, you know, run those courses. Um, and so we're limited there a little bit, so that'll be something that'll be coming up as well, not only to look at staffing in the future. But uh, we'll be revisiting, you know, facilities as well um as we continue to grow.
Um, I'm I'm looking at this, I'm seeing a significant increases in class, average class size, particularly at uh Winnequa and Glacial Drummond. And um, it um, it seems to me, and also there must be some at the high school. Because we're not, we're increasing by twenty-five students and and uh, only adding. One half of physical education teachers, so those twenty-five students are increasing class size. Um, entirely, right?
Right, but i- if you consider that, you know, the average teacher teaches a hundred and twenty-five kids.
It's not.
So, you know, so that's essentially the growth for, but so, but of course, it doesn't work out nice and neat that way, you know, but uh. Yeah, and the other thing, just as a reminder, uh, on these, this updated projection, this includes all the open enrollment seats that were approved. We won't actually fill all those positions, so this is kind of the high end of where we would expect to be on the enrollment. In all likelihood, it could be a little bit lower than that, but we wanna staff for what it could look like.
But each of those additional twenty-five students ends up with seven teachers, right? Ends up on the workload of of seven teachers, correct? Cause they have several classes, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Peter, uh, next is Susan Manning.
Again, um, Dan, I think you've done a nice job with this. You you know, when you look at increase in enrollment, there's seventy-four additional students at Winnequa. And even though the class sizes are a little bit bigger, you've still kept them within the guidelines. And um, and I think that's really commendable, the work that you're doing with that. Plus, you're adding the additional um, staffing that we talked about at the workshop. You know, the counselors in the buildings. It's it's really, really helpful to see this information, because as people walk in the door next fall, particularly in that building. You're gonna feel that, I mean, that's that's a significant number of new students. So I appreciate the work that you've done and the material you've given us ahead of time, so we know that this is coming. And we can help answer questions, so thank you.
Appreciate that, and just as a reminder, these reports are all compiled by Jared and working closely with our principals on these enrollment projections, so.
Alright, can I have a motion, please? Andrew?
I move approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three preliminary staffing plan as presented.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Susan Manning?
Hi.
Susan Fox?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Lorraine?
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion is carried. Peter?
Just a quick question. What does, how much does the staffing plan change the budget? Sorry about that. Didn't ask that earlier.
Yeah.
Jared?
Nope. So with the projected F T increases, obviously, there will be some retirements that happen. And resignations, but if you were just to apply, and depending on the experience that we hire. You're looking at, you know, close to about, you know, eight, eight hundred thousands if nothing else was to change. By those nine F T Es. But there will be definitely changes within the overall staffing of the district as we move forward with resignations and retirements.
Thank you, Jared. All right, moving on to the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital projects budget.
So two meetings ago, I had presented a draft capital improvements budget. And as I had indicated, we were still going through the final. Process of getting final bids, working on timelines. Are there certain items that we could still? Be able to get into the summer project timeline due to supply chain because of COVID? And just everything that's happening in the world as we speak. In addition to that, we are still recommending that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which has been something that. We increased after the last operational referendum to maintain. We also are working on some projects that still fall within that maintenance side of the. Referendum that we passed in two thousand and eighteen. So there are some things that did get moved from the draft plan. That as I worked through it with our facility supervisor Jeff Carr, were identified as things that were called out in the referendum that should have been quoted there. And so we made some changes. Specifically, the biggest change that you'll see is like the H V A C upgrades that were listed in the draft plan. Two meetings ago are no longer in the final plan because those are things that were actually called out in the. Capital referendum for the maintenance section. In addition to that, there are just some items that we can no longer get. So that means there were new items that. We had to add to the draft or to the final plan to meet that six hundred and fifty thousand. And obviously. You might be thinking, well, how do you, with all these projects, equal six hundred and fifty thousand dollars equally evenly? There is contingency built into some of these. Obviously. We always know that there's sometimes there's a hiccup that comes along and there has to be additional costs that. Come forward and sometimes we get additional savings because we didn't use those contingencies. If there is additional funding remaining after we get through all the summer capital projects. Then either that's just the savings within the budget or working with the facility supervisor and the director of business services. They might be able to identify some of those additional projects that didn't make the list for this year that were items that were deferred because it. Exceeded the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget that we have in our plan over the last number of years and look forward to keeping it at a minimum six hundred and fifty. And I'll just put a plug in as we continue to work through, you know, app, adding Granite Ridge School, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is a, is the, is the floor. Obviously, I would continue to urge to keep our buildings looking in the great condition that they are. And as Dan had mentioned, when we talk about looking at spaces for our students. Specifically, when it comes to electives at the high school, there might need to be some additional funds that are put towards a, you know, he specifically spoke to the. Face program and having that ability to add a second kitchen. So some of those things, obviously, we need to continue to monitor and plan for in the future. The biggest item that is taking up in this is the whole playground. Parking lot reconfiguration for M G twenty-one in the Nichols building. I did attach a conceptual plan per requested at the, at the meeting before. That's a conceptual plan. That's pretty much what we bid off of. We'll work through the, the final details, but as you can see in the, the playground portion of it. Where we've been using that old blacktop area, which, when it was a previous elementary school, we need to replace. The basketball hoops, put in some four-square. As M G twenty-one added the middle campus. Really, we haven't did any outside upgrades to the play area for those students. And so. We are going to increase safety with that as well. So we're not going to have a driveway that leads back to the playground area where our kids are currently playing. Those will be added. In addition to that, we're adding some additional parking spaces at the district office to accommodate. You know, the third floor professional development. I know that COVID has presented some virtual learning, but there's a point where. You know, we're going to get back to having some more in-person opportunities to. Provide professional development. In addition to that, it's also an additional space for our community to utilize. Nichols Gym is utilized almost every single night and every single. Weekend when we work with the park and rec department or for our youth wrestling program or our dance team. So. Definitely the Nichols building and the district office building is becoming utilized a lot more, not just to house the district office. In the M G twenty-one. School, charter school.
Peter?
How did you know I had a question? My question is. My question is, how long do you expect carpet to last?
Well, it depends on the location and the wear and tear. So specifically, the carpet that's being replaced at Glacial Drummond is the original carpet. We know that. That we have students in our buildings and they need. It's not like a home or some of the other. Areas that you might think of carpet. There's just lots of wear and tear on the number of students, especially when we've had close to, you know, eight hundred, nine hundred students. At Glacial Drummond and that being the original carpets. I don't have a specific number to tell you how long we should expect it, but it's definitely been over ten years. Over ten years, well, actually thirteen, fourteen years.
Fourteen years.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that we've done our due diligence and plus, as you know, we're. I mean, students, there's water, there's winter, salt, a lot of things that play a role into that. And. Obviously, some school districts have moved away from the carpet and went with more of the. Tile, but obviously carpet makes it a more warm environment, especially with students that are, you know, not only working in desk, we wanted to keep the space flexible for our students and being able to. Allow them to learn in the best, wherever they need to learn at, and that might be sitting on the floor, laying on the floor, standing at a desk. So. But to get, go back to your answer, Pete, to answer your question, Peter, like, I don't know specifically, but, I mean, I would say fourteen to fifteen years is a pretty good. Run with carpets in a school district, in a, in a school building.
I don't, I don't, I'm having trouble recalling, comparing this. I don't recall previous carpet replacements and what the lifetime, what the, we'd, we'd seen in those. And then the other thing is bathroom sinks and faucets, the high school. Are being replaced and that's a fairly big ticket item. Any comments about this?
I sure do. That was one of the things that keep getting deferred and I shouldn't say deferred. I mean, it's been something that's been on our list for the last couple of years and. You know, as we worked through the referendum and the maintenance projects, that was something that just got pushed aside. But if you speak with the staff at the high school, they will tell you that some of our faucets and sinks are. You know, they don't turn on, kids are, only part of it turns on, there's leaking. And so this is a way to get all of our bathrooms, sinks and faucets up to. Working facility. I can't speak to the exact number of sinks and faucets, but I can tell you that if you speak with. High school staff, they will definitely tell you that is one of the largest issues that they hear from students.
Okay. And I'm assuming that these have sensors turning them on and off. Is that would be your plan to install? That's what goes in everywhere?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I do see your hands, Susan Manning. Elizabeth, do you want me to show your? Rebecca, Elizabeth indicated the internet says five to fifteen years, depending on the environmental factors. So, just thought I'd share that. All right, Susan Manning?
Jared, could you just put up the parking lot picture at M G twenty-one in case people ask about that? So that we know. Kind of what that configuration is. I don't know if it's easy to put that up, but.
Sure, let me just get it here.
And then just give us a brief. Is the plan to add one additional row of parking? Is that your thought?
Yeah, it's additional row, but it will equal to parking. So can everybody see it on their screen? So. How it is, is the, when you're looking at the map, Nichols Road is on the bottom of it. So it's sort of pulling in. You'll see where my mouse is. This is the. Old asphalt, which we have obviously parking spaces and there are four basketball. We are looking at turning this portion into a hard surface. And this is where we would have four-square and updated basketball hoops. And then this area would turn into a green space, a soft area. There is a swing set that we'll be putting in that M G twenty-one was able to purchase with their. Middle school campus expansion grant. So we do have that. So there would be the wood chips and pea gravel. This access lane would actually be removed for the purposes of safety. There's a large tree here. One of the things that we were originally looking at is trying to add an additional row of parking. But we would also lose some green space throughout here, in addition to that large tree having to come down. So we felt based on, you know, environmental impacts and looking at. How many different parking spaces do we truly need? We felt it was more. Important to continue to keep additional green space around. I mean, I know we have the large green space where the garden is and the bees are at. Over here. However, obviously, that can be a distance for the students to go. So when they're doing recess, they can come right out of the building and go down here. If you've been to the district office or by M G twenty-one, they do have a temporary ice skating rink. That the students have put together as a project. And if we look at long-term and maybe that's something that they want to do instead of having that over in this area that's far away, that can't be necessarily observed on the weekends for safety purposes. That can also be put down here. So, right now. Our parking lots has stalls that face Nichols Road through here and then just the middle. We would be adding this whole area of parking and obviously making it diagonal for the purposes of safety and trying to keep directional. The traffic going in the same direction. But ultimately, what it looks like we're adding about seventy-five-ish, I'll say-ish, because obviously, as we start working through the final plans with the city. There might be some situations where we have to remove a couple for different situations for fire truck radius churning or things like that. But about seventy-five additional parking lots, that parking spaces that we should be able to get with this new, new configuration.
Well, and then Jared. They've been utilizing like a gazebo type, you know, that kind of tent area. Is that, that's still there, right?
So that space, they would have enough space. I can't tell you specifically if we would have to move it back a little bit, but that would also be. An opportunity to keep in that green space down below instead of bringing, one of the plans that we had looked at actually had. Another set of parking spaces here that were similar to these that would face towards it. But by removing that, we still, we should be able to have enough space for that outside classroom environment. They also have some classroom, classroom space up in between, like what they call the, the core. Yard area close to the buildings. It's sort of tucked back in. And then we will put a sidewalk in through here. At this point, and I will tell you, future plans might call for it, but obviously, at the same time, we don't want to put something in that. Might not necessarily be needed. We're putting in the sidewalk and obviously there's the curve. And so we believe that should be sufficient for safety. But if we find that there's lots of balls and stuff that are rolling. There would be the plan to come back and put a chain link fence through here. That's one of the things that, you know, obviously, we don't want individuals to feel like they're. Being quarantined or locked into a space. And so that's why we didn't design it with a fence to start with, but definitely have the ability to add a fence if. Need to be like, for example, you'll see in the capital project plan, we are adding some fence area by Winnicott. And that was something where we did not have a fence, but as we've had more kids outside and different playing opportunities, we've discovered that was something that needed to happen. And so. Whenever we're looking at summer capital projects or any type of project, safety is always the number one priority. So. Usually if something is identified as a safety issue, it comes to the top of the list pretty quickly.
Thank you.
Is the, is the entrance, is the driveways? I'm sorry. Yeah.
It's okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. Is the entrance to the driveway wide enough for school buses? Doesn't look like it from the way you have the drawing.
We currently do have school buses that come in currently for our M G twenty-one. So we do have, there is enough space for that.
It looks like they can't, you couldn't have one coming in and one going out at the same time. Probably you couldn't have, you'd have issues with even cars doing that, right?
Right now, we have buses coming in and I can't speak specifically if we've had a situation where a car had a stop. I mean, we typically don't have two or three buses serving M G twenty-one at the moment. But I do, I mean. I can't answer that question specifically. As of right now, I have not heard of any issues with buses and cars meeting and having an issue there.
Okay. I mean, just the way you have drawn with the bus routes, the yellow bus routes, it seems not quite wide enough. But. All right, thank you.
Can I have a motion, please? Andrew?
I move approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three preliminary, oh, sorry. Move approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital projects budget as presented.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Susan Manning?
Hi.
Susan Fox?
Hi.
Elizabeth? Eric?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Lorraine?
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion is carried. Right next is the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school start and end times Granite Ridge School and Glacial Drummond School.
Okay, I'll start with this. And we do have Chris Lang and Reed Foster join us tonight. If there's any specific questions about, specific to their buildings. So last year, when Granite Ridge came online, we spent a lot of time on, you know, determining what our starting end times, we're going to be working that with our new bus routes. And of course, the goal always is to not, we don't want the bus routes that necessarily totally drive the start and time. We want to take into consideration what's best for our students and our families. And you might recall that one of the goals was to have a later start for our middle school. The research is pretty clear that we know that, you know, for. Adolescents that age that that later starts are generally preferred. And so we had a plan that we thought was really good, that would be an improvement over, you know. What we might have had previously and that would work with the bus schedule. And then, of course, as you go through a year, things don't always work exactly the way that they, you might have anticipated. And. And so I'll start with kind of the big picture, like I said, and Chris Reed can, can speak more to this. And Jared, of course, has been working with, with them. Really all year on this and, and how to interfere or aligns with our bus routes. But, you know, the, the real issue is this with families. Okay, we know that we have families that have students in more than one building. And so the reality is that even though Glacial Drummond starts later. We have a lot of kids that arrive really early because their siblings might be dropped off at Granite Ridge at the same time. Or in some cases, the buses are getting there a little bit early as well. And so that creates a challenge for supervision and, and it's just a long time, you know, to have that, that space there. And so. Why don't I pause there because I'm probably not doing it complete justice, but that, that's the general idea of what the challenge has been is students arriving too early at Glacial Drummond this year. And then, of course, whatever happens at Glacial Drummond does impact Granite Ridge because of the, the space and the shared busing and so on. So if you guys want, you want to fill in the blanks and the stuff that I left out there, any detail, please go ahead.
Yeah, I can just, so we're going to try to start a little bit later just because of what you said, Dan. Parents had kind of requested it. And research does say that kids, middle school students do fare better starting a little bit later. However, if you put all of our students on the same bus as Granite Ridge, who's starting at seven, what, forty-five, seven fifty? However, if you put all of our students on the same bus as Granite Ridge, who's starting at seven, what, forty five, seven fifty?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty, so they're getting dropped off at Granite Ridge at seven thirty. They're getting to our school at seven thirty. Two, um, it, they're not sleeping in. They're still getting up and getting on an extremely early bus. So then we're having to provide supervision. At um, GDS for forty five minutes before they start school and our teachers aren't even at the building yet, like. Some, I'm not even at the building sometimes right now before students get there. And I get to school by, you know, between seven twenty and seven thirty usually. Um, and we have students already there, um, due to, you know, kids wanting to get parking spots. Older brothers and sisters wanting to get parking spots to high school, or parents needing to work or um, things like that. So I did. Once we found out that our kids um, had to ride the same bus as Granite Ridge, I did ask Dan and Jared to change it. But it just wasn't possible this year. Um, so we definitely asked for it to be changed back next year. And so that's why we've requested the change to go earlier and be similar to Granite Ridge. Because parents do need to just kind of make the loop if they have students in both schools.
Are there any questions from board members? All right, uh, can I have a motion, please?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the Glacial Drummond Granite Ridge School start and end times through twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three as presented.
A second.
Okay, any further discussion? Susan Fox?
I guess my only question is whether the motion, whether you need the motion to approve the entire, rather than just those two schools? Was that the intent or? Many others aren't changing, I just. Might be equivalent, but I'm just wondering if the amendment should be changed to reflect. The entire schedule.
Yeah, I wrote this as just a motion, you know, just the whole schedule, but I, I think in this case, as you said, just because only two are changing. I think that works.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure, that's all.
Okay, so are we changing it or the way we have it is fine?
It's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, you do the roll call vote.
All right, roll call vote, Susan Manning?
Hi.
Susan Fox?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Hi.
All right, Lorraine, aye, eyes have it, motion is carried. All right, uh, there are no discussion items, and for future meeting dates, they are listed in the board box. Uh, next meeting is March twenty third. Right.
I just, I, I just want to mention again that the workshop for tomorrow night was canceled. Um, Elizabeth and I both signed up for that, and I think we received notification, but I don't know that anybody else did.
You mean in Oregon, that one?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
I didn't get it.
We all got it from you, though. We didn't, I didn't get it originally, but I, but I had forgotten to sign up, so.
Well, Elizabeth, you were on the email, but I got it.
Well, then I must have gotten it. Probably sitting in my inbox somewhere.
Then read schedule to June is my understanding, so I assume we'll.
Okay, and Dan, did you see that as well, or did, did you just see it from my email?
I saw from your email. Um, so I was aware that it might be canceled because of low attendance, but um, I was not copied on the correspondent. So, yeah, so I, and, and honestly, just like everything else this year, I, I think the low attendance, well, conjecture what it might have been, but. So we're gonna take another shot at it again, uh, in June, and uh, there'll be a new invite coming out. And I guess their thought was that. You know, for the boards or the school districts are going to have more new board, board members might be a great opportunity for them as well to build and participate. So. We'll try to get in June, so.
Well, and I think the other thing was they canceled it, you know, lots of times people are signing up two days before or one day before. And they'd cancel it by that time, so they might have picked up more people, but. But that's what I have in my email.
Thank you, Susan, for giving that, us, that information. All right, Ian, can I have a motion for a German?
I move to a jar.
Second.
All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.